Good evening. It is six P M. And without objection, I will call the regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting for January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five to order. Councilmember Harris, will you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Please rise as you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep as charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Protem, may I so ask for a moment of privilege to make a statement commemorating the liberation of Auschwitz eighty years ago today?
Yes.
For those of you in the audience, I just wanted to make a statement of knowledge today. Today, we solemnly mark eighty years since the liberation of Auschwitz, the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, a moment that revealed to the world the unimaginable horrors of the Holocaust. This day is a reminder of the depths of human suffering caused by hatred and the resilience of those who survived. As we remember the six million Jews and millions others who perished, let us also honor their survivors who have carried their stories forward, ensuring the lessons of the Holocaust endure. It is our shared responsibility to stand against antisemitism, hatred, and bigotry in all forms to build a future rooted in compassion and respect. And to our Jewish neighbors in Dunwoody, in the region, state, and the country and the world, and all who reflect on this solemn anniversary, we stand with you in remembrance and commit to ensuring that never again remains not just a promise but a guiding principle. If I could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Secunder. Chief Carlson, you're up. I believe we're swearing in a new officer and have some recognition.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, no swearing in today, but we've got some lined up to for that. But today is going to be recognizing Sergeant Trey Nelson. Familiar face around this area. He is right now in charge of our traffic unit and our K nine unit and does a phenomenal job. Well, being a part of the, as our traffic unit supervisor, he is a member of the Matten, which is the Metro Atlanta Traffic Enforcement Network. Essentially what it is, it's it's all traffic units that come together throughout Metro Atlanta. We just hosted actually their last Matten meeting down at First Baptist. So he came, you know, Trey's not one for recognition, but he, I found out through the grapevine that he was given an award of achievement, and it's a big one. So not only what Sergeant Nelson does behind the scenes, so this is the gentleman here, when we get a traffic complaint, I forward it all to him. He has a list, he, you know, we also send it out to the, you know, our patrol staff as well, but they handle all of our traffic complaints. So not only what he does here and behind the scenes, it's what he does every single day. But this year, Matten nominated him to be the Officer of the Year for two thousand twenty four through the Metro Atlanta Traffic Enforcement Network. I wasn't surprised that he got it. I see what he does. We do what we call distracted driving details, and he'll actually bring in numerous other agencies into our jurisdiction to, you know, enforce hands-free driving, you know, seat belts, crosswalks and all that. He coordinates all that, and he's had huge success with it. At this time, I'm going to ask Sergeant Nelson, I'd like for you to explain just a little bit more in depth of what Matten is and what it does to promote the safety here in Dunwoody for our citizens.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, chief. Luckily enough, we are able to use resources, not just the city of Dunwoody, where we coordinate with the Government's Office of Highway Safety and other police departments around Metro Atlanta, which we consider the Metro Atlanta Traffic Enforcement Network, like Chief said. It's around seventy agencies and all their traffic units come together. At least once a month, we all meet and we kind of have fellowship, we have training as part of it, and there's also checkpoints on roadblocks as well that occur at these meetings. We host them a good amount in the city of Dunwoody. This year, we're going to host two meetings for twenty twenty five. And part of that is just creating a safe environment for our drivers, our walkers, our bikers, and for officers to learn too. So we utilize G O H S and Matten a great deal for our distracted driving campaigns that we do every single month, our crosswalk details, and then also any type of safety checkpoint we set up in the city of Dunwoody. We usually look for outside resources and troopers outside A P D, Cobb, and all will come over and lend a hand and help us out in the city of Dunwoody to make our roads safer for everybody.
And with that, Sergeant Trey Nelson is the Officer of the Year for Matten. Congratulations.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, Sergeant Nelson. I just, I just want to thank you on behalf of all the residents of the city for everything you do for this community on a daily basis, and it brings us a great pride to recognize when that contribution is recognized by other agencies. So thank you so much for shining such a positive light on the city and for everything you do to serve our citizens every day. We genuinely appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, we will move on to public comments. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address. First up is Jeremy Berry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeremy Berry. I live at ten thirty four Trail Ridge Lane. First, want to thank Councilmember Secunder for your comments on Holocaust Remembrance Night and for the liberation of Auschwitz. Not why I'm here to speak, but I appreciate you acknowledging that tonight. I've been a resident of Dunwoody since two thousand seven. My wife, two sons, and I live in the Branches neighborhood and an avid, avid runner who runs along Mount Vernon regularly. And back of the envelope, I've realized that I've probably run Mount Vernon well fifteen hundred, two thousand times since we've lived here. When I first raised the issue, and I'm here to speak on Nandina Lane, Jennifer Leslie was still working at eleven Alive and interviewed me, and I was at that time complaining about the the safety on Nandina Lane. So that I go back probably twelve years or thirteen years when I've been talking about this issue. I see the mayor, Shortle, is here, and I've raised the issue with him when he was mayor as well. I've stopped police officers at Dunkin' Donuts to talk as well. When I run at six o'clock in the morning, it's pitch black and cars do not stop at that intersection. So I come here to thank y'all for addressing this situation. To say that it's, I actually looked in the, the report that's attached to the agenda, and I was stunned to see there fifty car crashes and only one pedestrian who's been hit. To be honest, I thought it would have been more. So I appreciate y'all addressing this. I would hope whatever could be done to force people to come to a complete stop, and as they're coming, I don't know what direction it is, but turning right onto Mount Vernon from Nandina to come to a complete stop to look to their right and make sure they do not hit someone. Again, at six o'clock in the morning, I run in reflective gear, I run with a light, but the number of times that I'm almost hit, I cannot even begin to count. So again, I appreciate y'all tackling this. It should be hopefully an easy fix. It looks like you may have to acquire some rights of way and reconfigure the intersection, but I, I think it'll be worth it. Unfortunately, it just takes one person being hit, and I think the city would face some pretty significant liability. But I, it sounds like y'all are doing this for the right reason. So thank you for that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Danny Shortle.
Good evening. I'm Danny Shortle, and I live at twenty eleven Woodland Way. And I'm here to talk about zoning, R Z twenty four oh two. You know, this is quite a long process. Started away last summer, first meeting you had, you had a hundred fifty or so citizens there. Up through that, the Planning Commission, I counted a hundred and twenty-two, either personal representatives or had somebody had represented a group that had talked to the Planning Commission, sent them ideas of, you know, what they wanted, what they didn't want, and of course, one thing that came up continuously was noise. And so the Planning Commission meeting on November, I happened to be there, and we talked about it. We had a lot of our concerned citizens. I don't know if any of you were there or not, but it brought up the same point again. And so the Planning Commission voted unanimously to put a time limit on it of eleven and twelve o'clock. And, you know, I left there and I said, okay, you know, we gave a little, we took a little, and but, you know, it's all washed out. There'll be time limits and everything will be going good. Well, this, you know, you're meeting here in January. I guess there wasn't any of us here. So sure, sure enough, it got changed. And I'm going to go back one, one more step here. At the Planning Commission meeting, sitting right behind me was the head of Branches Properties and two of his other folks. And I turned around and I said to him out loud, can you live with these restrictions of time? He did not hesitate. He said, yes. And then, you know, I read the minutes of the meeting here, and it said, the staff decided that it would be too difficult, basically, you know, create significant enforcement burden with the police department. Well, I bet you all the police officers, I know some of them, they have the media left, I know that guy, I know he's got a Timex watch. And all of us, even if we're Marines like he and I were, we can read watches. So eleven o'clock and twelve o'clock is really easy for us to drive through there, and if anybody's still open, we can understand that. None of us have a decibel meter that I know of. Maybe they do. Okay, you can't answer me, sorry. But they don't have a decimal meter. So noise complaint is pretty difficult. It's kind of like a deluxe sandwich. What's on it? I don't know. But, you know, so it's very difficult to tell about noise unless you got one of those situations. But what I'm saying is, you know, you've been elected by the citizens. The staff has not been elected. The staff works for you, and they work for that man right over there who's called the city manager. I know he's, we have a city manager form of government. But I, just amazes me with the number of people that complained and everything else that that got changed and the time got taken out because a staff member said that. I think you ought to revisit that. Remember, you got elected to represent the citizens of this city. Please represent them properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shortle. Those are the only cards I have for public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, that closes the public comment section. There will be an additional time for public comments at the end of the meeting. Reports and presentations, direction Dunwoody Status Update, Richard McLeod.
Good evening. I'm going to introduce Anna Baggett in a moment. Allison Stewart Haas was going to be here, but she has got a sick son, so she had to stay home with him. We're roughly halfway through the comprehensive plan process. It'll probably June or July will come out. It'll come to you for a vote, and it'll go to D C A and A R C for a final comments, and then it'll return to you to be approved. We've had very good public response this. We've done many of the events. She'll go into some details on it, but we also had a survey, and they had over a thousand responses on it. So Anna, what's your call up?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Baggett, and I am a community planner with T S W. And tonight, I'll just give you an update on the comprehensive planning process as well as the Unified Development Ordinance rewrite. And I think Richard took some of my key points, and we really heard you the last time we were here about how important engagement is. And so a lot of my, my time this evening will be kind of going over what we've done so far. But first, I'll kind of talk through where we are in the process, as well as some big ideas coming from the comprehensive plans, since that's, you know, kind of what we're primarily working on at the moment, and then going over some next steps for this process. So Richard mentioned that we are well on our way for this comprehensive planning process. We are nearing the end, actually. We are, we're kind of through this community agenda phase where we will be pulling all of the pieces together after all this engagement that we've done, after all of our data collection from the community assessment. We're pulling the pieces together and right now focusing on land use as well as drafting the plan itself. For the coding process, that's been kind of working in the background. I think we talked earlier about how the engagement for the comprehensive plan will also work for the code update. So they've been kind of working in the background to do an initial diagnostic of the code, and that work will continue. So for the engagement update, I'm just going to go through some of the, the engagement that we've done so far. You'll see an engagement timeline. We've had a number of events, two pop-ups, a public workshop, a survey, and a number of stakeholder interviews, some of which I know y'all participated in, so thank you for that. And about three steering committee meetings. I think this presentation is going to say that we had four, but the snow day last week interrupted our fourth, so we had to reschedule. So kind of towards the beginning of the process, we really focused on raising awareness for not only the survey that we launched, but also for the process itself, for the website. So we went to where the community was already hanging out, like different community events, like picks in the park. City staff went out to Dunwoody Parks to hand out different flyers, as well as some other events. And Richard mentioned the survey. We had well over a thousand responses, which for a comprehensive plan, which is maybe not the most exciting process, I was really pleased with this number. And you'll see on the right, we have kind of a breakdown of some of the, some demographics of those participants. And since we did this survey early on in the process, that was, that allowed us to see who we were already reaching and, you know, where we could improve upon reaching other folks. Like, for instance, eighty-seven percent of the respondents were homeowners. So we realized, you know, maybe we should reach out to renters, pass out flyers at different apartment complexes and so forth. I mentioned a couple of pop-ups. We had one towards the beginning of the process in August. So it was a back-to-school night at Dunwoody Village. So we kind of at that stage of the plan, planning process, we were kind of seeing where Dunwoody was, like where, how people were feeling about different parts, different aspects of the city. So in keeping with the back-to-school theme, we decided to hand out report cards on various, like for transportation, housing, how well people thought the city was doing. And participants were most satisfied with the quality of life. So parks, green space, arts and culture, people were very satisfied and gave a lot of A's to that one. Most recently, we had a pop-up at the Holiday Lights Festival in Brookrend Park. We continued to try to think creatively about how to get people engaged. And so we asked folks to kind of fill in a coloring sheet and gave out little prizes for children. But talking about different housing types and under what circumstances people would feel comfortable with introducing a little bit of housing diversity. And I'll get into that later in my presentation. We also had a workshop. We were at a storefront at Park Place. So again, we were really trying to think creatively, so we, we took that concept of being a store and ran with it. We had over sixty participants, but basically what we asked folks to do, since this, again, was kind of towards the beginning of the process, to basically shop for their dream Dunwoody. So we had different departments like transportation, land use, et cetera, and had different items underneath it. Like, for instance, one of our top sellers was a downtown Dunwoody. People really wanted a place like downtown Alpharetta to go to, to hang out. So the first iteration would have folks shop for those items, and then the, the second station was what we called the fitting room, where if there were specific locations within the city that people wanted to see these specific things, they were able to map that out. Again, it's, it shows that we've had four steering committee meetings here, but we've only had three. We have a really great engaged group. In this committee, we've had to extend our meeting times because we want to make sure that we're hearing all of what y'all have to say. We're thinking creatively about the activities we do. For instance, we had one where we took population projections for the next twenty years and asked folks to, on a map with monopoly pieces that represented various different numbers of households where they would like to guide that growth. And some of the recurring themes that we've been hearing is that there is a need for not only additional housing, but a variety of housing, particularly for first-time homebuyers and seniors. I mentioned that residents would like to see a downtown Dunwoody with walkable shops and restaurants. Along the same lines, residents really love their local centers like Dunwoody Village and Georgetown, and they want to see them grow and thrive. But on the same note, they are concerned about retail vacancies as well as office vacancies and how that might impact Dunwoody's local economy. We all know traffic congestion is a major issue, and people want more connectivity throughout the city as well as different ways to get around. And finally, people want to see their neighborhood character and green spaces preserved. So kind of looking ahead to where we're headed with engagement, we have one more workshop, and that will kind of be where we present the big ideas that I'll go over in just a moment of the comprehensive plan and make sure that everybody is happy with where we're headed and the direction the plan is taking. Then we will kind of transition into the more code-focused engagement, starting off with an online survey, having two more steering committee meetings, the, the fourth and the fifth, and an open house for, focused on the code as well. So some of the big ideas that are coming out of these plans are, you know, a comprehensive plan can be very, very general, but what we wanted to do was really focus on what's important, focus on the things that we're hearing over and over again. So we've identified three key focus areas that we want to do a deep dive in, not only for what's going on now, but, you know, some of the policies that we can kind of focus on. So the first being perimeter, we know this is a very, you know, important part of Dunwoody. It's the economic engine and continuing to invest and focus attention on it is important. Again, in engagement, we heard that local centers were really important to Dunwoody residents, and there is concern about those retail vacancies. So figuring out ways to support those local centers like Dunwoody Village and Georgetown is going to be a key focus area as well. And finally, the neighborhoods, we, we understand that people want to preserve that family-friendly and green character of the neighborhoods. The other kind of big ideas coming out, and this is something that we will be talking with the steering committee, our steering committee later next week, is kind of our land use approach. We wanted, we're proposing kind of a different approach, one being streamlining your land use policy map into one, but also combining it with detailed land use guidance. So it's easy to understand, but you can get that level of detail you're looking for. And then we also have a commercial core concept. I'll go into that in a moment, as well as a stoplight future land use policy and missing middle housing options, which I alluded to earlier. So I mentioned that streamlined policy map. You have, currently you have a character area map and a future land use map. And so what we are suggesting is kind of streamlining that into one character area map, but while also providing that nuanced future land use policy. And in this approach, it will promote flexibility, flexibility while, you know, maintaining that clarity of like, if you really want to dig into the details, you can kind of figure out, you can look to the character areas and look to the future land uses within that. And this approach also facilitates the transition to the code very nicely. And so with that, I mentioned this nuanced future land use policy. We'll take Dunwoody Village as an example. We think for these commercial centers, it's really important to identify the core, and we've already changed these maps. Again, this is very draft information, and we will, we will be discussing it with the, with the steering committee. But we identified certain commercial cores within some of the, the commercial centers. And each character area will have kind of that stoplight chart where green is a, is a future land use that is appropriate no matter what. Yellow is appropriate with conditions. So in the case of a commercial center, some land uses might be more appropriate for the core. And then some land uses, maybe, you know, if you are transitioning to the neighborhoods, you might want to have different land uses. So that, I think, you know, provides more detailed land use guidance and protects neighborhood character and kind of gets to that buy right uses to streamline the review process. And I mentioned a missing middle approach. This is something that we, that came out of some of our conversations with the steering committee, and we kind of tested it at our most recent pop-up. But missing middle housing, for those that may not know what that means, is kind of any housing type that's in between a single-family home and your typical apartments. So good examples are townhouses, triplexes, quadplexes, duplexes. And so what we're kind of testing, and again, this, this is still very much in draft form, is how is there a way we can incorporate missing middle along major corridors in the neighborhood areas? And because of this, we, you know, we want to support retail by adding more rooftops near commercial centers. But also, we want to have an option that fits into that neighborhood character because we know that's really important. And it provides more, you know, gentle density near those commercial centers. So we've devised kind of three options. Option A, no change. We don't want this at all, which is a very valid option. Option B is location-based, where it's a quarter mile from a commercial center, and it's parcels fronting a corridor. So not those kind of sideways-facing parcels that are within, you know, a subdivision. We, we're not talking about those. And then the third and final option is opportunity-based. You know, where are those parcels that, you know, have a high susceptibility to change? Or we did a redevelopment analysis that identified some properties that we think might change over the next twenty years. And what this will come out as is more of a policy approach. So right now, we're showing some specific parcels. But we know that can be really scary for folks. So what will appear in the plan will be something more conceptual, which will have, you know, detailed guidance on what we mean. But we wanted to kind of test these ideas on a parcel specifically, parcel-specific map, and then pull it back to that comprehensive plan scale. So some of our next steps, I mentioned we're pulling the draft plan together, and then we will continue with the adoption process, transmitting to A R C as well as D C A, and making any changes that are needed. And then y'all, y'all will see it and eventually adopt it. And the next steps really are really digging into the code. So that code assessment will be, will continue, and then eventually we'll start the ordinance development process. So that's all I have for y'all tonight. Thank you so much for listening. My colleague, Allison Stewart Harris, I think Richard mentioned that she was supposed to be here, but this is her information if you want to reach out to her.
Thank you, Anna. Any council comments or questions?
And thank you for the pitch hit tonight. You did a great job.
I did put the presentation together, so it was, it was good.
Doesn't look like any questions at this point, so thank you. I look forward to our next steering committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an economic development update, uh, fourth quarter, Michael Starling.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, these two presentations, uh, weren't put together at at the same time, but they sort of go together. Um, as you recall, when you asked for these updates, you wanted them to be updates on our activities, sort of what economic development is doing. But I think more importantly, what you wanted to get into is trends, what's happening, um, on the ground level in economic development. Um, so I'm going to do a little bit of both tonight. Um, our activity is down in the fourth quarter. That's pretty normal for fourth quarters in commercial real estate. It's definitely, um, a normal with a presidential election. You see a lot of decisions are put on hold until people see where things are going. So, uh, we expect our activity in both recruitment and retention meetings to increase, um, in twenty twenty five. Uh, ribbon cuttings continue. Um, as you know, city is not, um, running with those any longer, but we do participate and we expect a number of of, um, High Street as well as Campus two forty four, uh, ribbon cuttings. Uh, we held a strategic planning retreat, uh, for the Art Commission, um, to look at sort of a little bit longer term, what they want to focus on. Um, and we'll be bringing some of those findings, uh, later on. Uh, we did a presentation, Fernando and I did, to, uh, state project managers. That's the first time we've done one since COVID, actually like two weeks before COVID. We I presented to them, and this is, uh, Georgia, uh, project managers, Metro Atlanta Chamber, Georgia Power. These are the folks who go out and recruit businesses to the state. And so communities will go in, present to them. Four years is is certainly long enough for us to have not been in front of them. So it's great to get in front of them, uh, show them how Dunwoody has changed and some of the opportunities we have in our office market, which for Dunwoody, that's really what they're focused on is is what kind of office space do you have and and where is it? Uh, we are also, uh, touring all of the incubators and accelerators spaces in in the region. Uh, Fernando is putting that together and we've, we've been to two Fayette and Tech Alpharetta. So we'll be continuing that the rest of twenty twenty five. And Ed City, our next community forum is next week. Location change, don't go to Del Frisco's, it's it's no longer open. We're gonna, we're gonna have it at, um, the other steak restaurant. Yes, Fleming's, thank you. Uh, so we're talking about retail, it's very interesting. Some of the input from the comp plan about retail, people are very focused on retail. And I do think that there's a bit of a, um, misunderstanding about our our retail market. We have very little vacancy in retail. We just have some retail that has been vacant for a very long time, and I think it looks like, uh, retail is in trouble. Uh, but in fact, the four point seven million square feet of of retail in Dunwoody is basically full. It's it's only got a vacancy of two point three percent. Again, a lot of that is retail that has just remained vacant for a lot of different, a lot of different reasons. We've added almost two hundred thousand square feet over the past eighteen months. Hundred and fifty thousand at High Street and another twenty something at at Campus two forty four. So our retail is growing, but it remains, uh, very vibrant and and mostly full. Uh, we do have some space that is they is leased, but it's it's not occupied, but still four percent is a very low, um, vacancy rate. And as a reminder, retail represents twenty percent of the property valuation for commercial. Um, so when you look at your commercial valuation, twenty percent of that comes from our retail. That's not the hundred percent impact of retail. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into that. They they pay business license fees, alcohol license fees, um, and sales tax. And when we did, uh, Ed City two point O, the the consultants looked at our retail market and gave us, um, some insight and 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 gave us some ideas to to sort of, uh, keep front of mind, um, in the future. Uh, we are, you know, perimeter is one of the premier, uh, retail markets i- in the region. Uh, we have high asking, uh, rents, very limited construction. You know, that two hundred thousand square feet, we're not going to replicate that anytime soon. Um, so there's very little new construction and we stay pretty, pretty well occupied. Future development is going to be mostly focused on food and beverage, uh, entertainment and services. Retail is changing. We'll talk a little bit about that. And it, food and beverage is the is the new anchor tenant for retail. They want great restaurants because that brings people to the centers. It's not the convenience retail anymore. It's not the boutiques. It really is the food and beverage restaurants. And most of this is going to be focused on mixed use developments. Um, repositioning, redeveloping our existing strip shopping centers is is the future of new retail and in Dunwoody. They gave us, uh, again, some ideas to explore. High Street is going to represent most of our our new retail now and in and in the future. Um, really what retail owners are looking at is is sort of to optimize their mix, almost to curate and experience for for people. They're very specific about the types of retailers they bring into a center. Again, food and beverage, especially retail, mixed use is interesting that people talked about, uh, walkability, pedestrian oriented, walkable centers is what, if that's how people want to spend their time and want to, they want to spend time in retail centers that are walkable, not necessarily where you have to drive, park and get out and walk in. And as land prices increase and infill contin- infill continues, we're going to see a need for more parking, more structured parking. We're going to start seeing more and more of our s- strip shopping centers by move to a more dense format, and so we're going to lose a lot of that surface parking, which long term is a good thing. Surface parking is really not paying very much to the city or any other government entity. So we want to see those redeveloped. Again, we've talked a lot about this, retail is changing. People want to go somewhere where they can connect, they can engage and experience things. That might be food and beverage, but also might be, um, pot shack or something like that. I, my wife and I went to the Painted Pickle, uh, this weekend and played pickleball indoors. I was sort of surprised. It's not just pickleball. There's a, there's a ton of other things to do in that big shopping center. So we're going to see more and more of that in the future. And most of this new retail is coming in areas with green space, uh, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We also talk about specific commercial areas, and I'm going to talk about perimeter today. There's a lot of activity in perimeter, obviously Ashford Lane, everybody's familiar with. High Street continues to move forward. I think they've got Cuttlefish, Jaguar Valero, um, Hampton Social, um, or or on their way to opening. So we're going to see more activity there. Campus two forty four, their retail should be open, uh, this this spring. Hart Place, they just announced two of their first, uh, retail. It's a, uh, an ice cream shop and a a boxing, a workout location for for, I think it's pepper boxing. Um, so they're starting and and more to more to come, come with that. I I put these visuals in just to showcase all of our commercial areas now have have parks in green space at at the at the center of them. Uh, this was directly from the the, uh, Ed City two point O study, and this was not retail specific, but it was supportive land uses, things that we can focus on that's going to support not only retail, but our office and our residential. And you can see those food and beverage, more and more entertainment, public lawns, activation space, programmed events, you're going to hear from Rosemary Watts in in a little bit about Create Dunwoody, the need to have music, to have events in these areas. That's what, um, users of these spaces are are looking for. Uh, we do have a number of older office buildings. Um, so the office market is somewhere where we have a lot of vacancy. It's it's about twenty four, twenty five percent right now. Um, but almost ten percent of that is in properties that I would consider are are zombie office properties. They're buildings that are never going to be office again. If we took out all of that, our our vacancy in the office market would be closer to eighteen percent, which is a very healthy, um, and very competitive. So I think fifty six perimeter center east is is getting ready to start the the, um, rezoning process. So so you'll see that at some point in the future. It's a hundred thousand square foot office building that's looking to become something else, housing, I believe. Uh, sixty four and sixty six perimeter center east are also in the very beginning conceptual stages of looking at what do they do to this twenty acres of of older suburban property? Um, you know, do they go residential? Do they try to reuse those office buildings? And twelve hundred Ashwood, uh, was a building that that closed just before the end of the year. So that property was taken over by the bank. It was then sold by the bank to an investor. And so I would think they're going to start very soon on a concept. Uh, we've met with them, um, to talk about, you know, what we would like to see. And we always, if it's in perimeter, we show them the Ed City study and say, this is a roadmap for you to get what you want. So that's it for the presentation. We have to take questions.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, counsel, Rob.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate getting this information. I wonder if you have, I guess, any thoughts or insights on the Walmart shopping center? What what's kind of going on there? Where do you think that might be headed? Just opinion or if you have actual information?
Absolutely. So I've got some opinion and I do have a little bit of of actual knowledge. Um, we we have met with them. Uh, they are waiting for Walmart to to give them the green light on whether they're going to give the property back. Walmart has the ability to renew, um, the lease for another five years. We don't think that's going to happen. We think they're going to release that property. But until that happens, the owner of the property can't really do much in the way, um, they can plan, and I think they can think. When we met with them, they were pretty clear that that they are a big box retail owner and that they would probably replace the Walmart with more big box. That may not be in the same format. The Walmart building would probably come down. And so there's an opportunity to reorient and redevelop. Um, but mixed use is not, at least what they told us on on their radar right now. Um, I would say there's probably quite a bit of activity behind the scenes on people who are interested in that shopping center. Walmart was very successful. They sold a lot of goods, sold a lot of groceries. It just didn't meet Walmart's internal, uh, metrics. And that's why that they they closed up as well as a few other stores. Uh, but there's still a need for that kind of of retail. And so I would expect them to to come forward at some point. I think August was was when Walmart, um, the date when they needed to give an idea of of if if they were going to re-lease, re- renew their lease or not. So I would think this summer we're going to know a lot more. And obviously, that is a big hole in the market. That was that was big news. I think that is is why a lot of people think, wow, retail is in trouble. Out of four point seven million square feet, even though that's a big box, it's still a fairly small fraction of our overall retail.
Hi, Michael. Um, I wanted to ask about the vacancies. So twenty four percent for office, you're saying?
Yeah.
And that's got to be higher than?
Uh, that's probably where most, most everyone is. Sandy Springs is very close to that downtown i- is that. So we're, we're in the same mix as everybody else. It's very high. There's, there's no doubt, i- and we're probably closer to thirty percent availability. So there's a difference between vacancy and availability means somebody might be paying a rent, a lease to the owner, but they're not actually occupying it. So th- there's no doubt there's a lot of office space that we're dealing with, that all of our competitors are dealing with. We think it's better to move that, that those office properties off the market sooner rather than later so we can get to building new stuff. And then it would shrink what's out there and and the idea would be that those office buildings that are left would actually do better. The Wall Street Journal, i- it's almost every week, there's a, there's an article about the coming, um, you know, it's at some point, these properties are going to have to make a decision to either give it up or do something else with the buildings. And so I think what we're seeing is a lot of activity, which I think is a is a good thing. That those properties that I mentioned, that's probably eight hundred thousand square feet of office space right there. And so if that's gone, th- that that will absolutely impact our overall number.
And then four percent for retail, how close is that to a normal year?
I I I would say that's probably better than most. I mean, the perimeter retail is is very high. And and I I would think that our competitors, and I can do a a a study of some of our other competitors, I would think that's lower than most.
So probably Walmart isn't on there because they still pay?
They're they're part of that availability. So I bet they're the enti- almost the entire piece of that availability. Sometimes there's a lag in the reporting, but I would think, I mean, they're, I think that box is three hundred thousand square feet, something like that. I bet that is pretty close to that, that extra percent or two.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I was curious, just, you had said food and beverage is now an anchor for retail, but they don't, what does that actually look like and how big of a restaurant? And I I'm just curious, like, what?
If you think of Ashford Lane, that's a perfect example of how you turn a few restaurants into an anchor for an entire center and and completely change the dynamic of what that shopping experience is. So what they did around the green, you know, closing the road, putting in green space, building five, six, seven restaurants around. It doesn't have to be, it's really not about the size of the restaurant. It really is the the type of restaurant and the driver. But then that allows them to to backfill other spaces because they know people are coming. You know, when you can shop on Amazon and get almost anything delivered to your house, it's hard to build, what, fifty years ago would have been boutiques and and it would have been dry goods, it would have been clothes. That's just not how people shop anymore.
So really, it's not just a restaurant, it's like that whole
Multiple restaurants.
Is, and that's that whole experience that then brings, that helps the retail.
And I think that's why you're seeing all these green spaces, right? You put a green space, you give something for the kids to do, or you you put cornhole out, you put five or six restaurants around, and then you can decide to go somewhere and you you can decide when you're there, if you want to go to one restaurant or another.
And this is just, I I might be a silly question, but when you look at the vacancy rate for retail, you can put F and B in retail, so. Right? So is that retail just has to be for sale stuff? Or does that retail could then become F and B?
Um, a- almost all retail can become, you know, a restaurant. I- it's just a cost a lot more, I mean, because you've got, you've got drain, you've you've got the vent and all all the HVAC you have to build. It's really more about location. I- if you, if you, one of the issues I I didn't highlight, but but reducing sort of individual pad retail development. If you've got a a a retail site that's all by itself, you have to put something really good in there to for it to probably succeed. If you've got five or six restaurants, then you you've got a destination. And i- if you look at a number of our retail centers like the Burger King site, the old McDonald's, they're pad sites, they're sort of by themselves, they're much harder to to backfill. Then say, i- if a restaurant goes out in Ashford Lane, they're going to be pretty quick to be able to backfill that space.
Okay, uh, thank you, Michael. I'm looking forward to the, uh, the Edge City presentation, uh, next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, ne- next on the agenda is the Create Dunwoody Annual Update, Rosemary. Or not Rosemary.
Hi, everyone. I'm Terry Julian Polk, and I serve as a chair of Create Dunwoody. And I wanted to take a moment to walk you through, um, the beginnings of what Create Dunwoody is and the successes that we've had in twenty twenty four and our transition into twenty twenty five. Rosemary will cover a lot of those details. Um, Create Dunwoody's vision and mission. We really are an organization that wants to foster a vibrant and thriving arts culture in the city, really driven by using using art as a catalyst for economic development. The vision that we have for Create Dunwoody to, um, to create is to, uh, make Dunwoody a city in the future and now that's recognized as a thriving hub of arts culture and creating creative innovation. We really see this as a way for us to continue to build, um, community, to make sure that our residents and our visitors and our workers have something to be excited about when they come to the city. In twenty twenty four, what we see as our top line, um, uh, review of twenty twenty four and what we look forward to, uh, uh, accomplishing in twenty twenty five, we started twenty twenty four with a vision around, uh, quarterly events on focused on visual arts, music, food and culture. We ended the year really having success across three of those measures. We ended the year really having success across three of those measures, visual arts, music, and culture. Three of these things were accomplished based on the success of our prior um executive director and very strongly on the work of our current executive director. We transitioned in Q three and brought Rosemary on uh and completed twenty twenty four with very, very strong results and have a very solid plan as we move into twenty twenty five. I know a lot of you are very familiar with Rosemary, but I do want to spend a quick minute and reintroduce who she is. Rosemary is an MBA graduate of Georgia Tech. She is an undergraduate of um Georgetown University, where she holds a BS in international business and Chinese. You guys have known her for more than four years as working in economic development for the city. And she's parlaying all that experience to bring that over to Create Dunwoody. And we are excited and very pleased with the work that she has done to bring twenty twenty four to a close. And we're excited even more so about what twenty twenty five will look like. So with that, I introduce to you our new executive director, Rosemary Watts.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Pro Temp and City Council. Thank you for having me. It's great to see you. So I'll start off by recapping twenty twenty four. First quarter, there were some spotlighting of our Brook Run mural artists uh that did the murals up on the skate park. And this was in collaboration with Parks and Rec. Quarter two, there were three art and sounds at La Meridian. They generated a twelve hundred seventy five dollars in revenue and had about twenty two hundred twenty four attendees. There was also work done with Edens at Park Place for two summer concert series. So I came in in September and brought over with me the Latin Hispanic cultural event. This is the fourth year that we've done it. Um, again, it every year it grows. So this was successful. We had over five hundred fifty more visitors on this day than on average Sunday in the same timeframe. Uh, over ninety five performers, anywhere from most nonprofits to s- schools that came um to dance, dance uh groups that would come. Um, we had seventeen exhibitions, including countries and vendors. And the sponsors that we had were Ashford Lane that paid for the uh stage and sound, Eclipse Deluna paid for our performer Jenny Superica Fogotao, and CTO Property Management. They probably spent close to three thousand on this event in addition to the city's funds. We also did the Scarecrow's Showdown, and this was in conjunction with uh at the Perimeter Chamber, former Perimeter Chamber. Um, they awarded two annual memberships to the winners. Twelve businesses participated. We are trying to bring this type of engagement with the community and make it larger. So we had a hundred twenty seven different votes for this and community donations. So again, year after year, we're trying to increase participation and get people to come to the village to see these. We, this was the second year that we did Dewali and Dunwoody. This year, we did it at the Dunwoody Nature Center, so in conjunction with them and Stage Door Theater that provided the actors for this story walk. Two nights uh of two shows were sold out. And we did a Rangoli workshop add-on at the event. We had twelve pole banners with Dewali around the perimeter area. And we had corporate engagement with Cox. So they invited us to come and do a Dewali workshop. So we provided an artist that did a Rangoli workshop for them. And this was Disability Month, so they were able to broadcast this to everyone in their company. There was nonprofit engagement. We had media press and events. And we came in with thirty six hundred dollars in revenue. Quarter four, we did the first village holiday celebration. So this event brought in seventeen hundred people more than on an average Sunday in that area. We had performers from Corners Outreach, Lighthouse, and it was a very diverse group of performers. So on the post-surveys, we found that the businesses, several businesses said they had twenty five to fifty percent increase in revenue at business versus the year before. Um, we collaborated with the Village Merchant Alliance, which, as you know, kind of started when I was here. And it's just grown. They've always talked about how they wanted more activation. They wanted to make the village more like a downtown where people would gather and do things. And this is one example of how we can do it. Um, we had over twen- twelve hundred visits on the day of the event, people that wanted to see what was going on. We had this map on there, so they would go to different areas of the village and not just be concentrated in the courtyard. So people were going all over and across the street at Ace Hardware and visiting all the different locations. Um, we had volunteers from Dunwoody High School, several community volunteers, seventeen businesses in the village participated. The Lantern Festival sold out more lanterns than we thought would actually participate. So uh we generated some revenue from that. And now we have learned quite a bit from this event and will know how to make it better for the next year. And the mayor mentioned that night that this was the most diverse crowd she'd ever seen in the village area. So it was a a a very successful first year event. So since I've been on board, we have accumulated some marketing assets. We have now retractable banners that we can reuse. We've increased our Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn presence. We just started a LinkedIn page. We have acquired um iPad for a selfie station with Simple Booth that we'll be using at all the events. Um, a sponsorship packet that we have online that people can look at too. Hopefully, we will get some sponsorships once we've got all these events that will show what what they will benefit out of being a sponsor. And we have events and photographs and videos that we can show of the events that we've done and lots of media coverage. The website has also improved. The list of events you see on the right are now on the website. So if people want to know what we're doing, it's listed there. And at the end of, when I, after I started, we have um increased our media coverage. And just an example of because we do these events early on in the month of Black History Month or whichever celebration is happening, we get some uh TV coverage. And that, we don't have to pay for that. That is just covered because we're doing these events. Um, so that's what we had last year. In twenty twenty five, we're hoping to make events even bigger and more impactful. Though uh on Sunday, we'll have our first ever Black History Cultural Heritage Celebration in Dunwoody. We've got a huge lineup of performers, storytellers, a film, a preview of the first uh black soap opera that's coming up in February. And we've partnered with Discover Dunwoody, La Meridian, and Akudi Events. They're contributing a lot of money and time into doing this, and we already have sponsors. Um, the Dunwoody Comedy Festival is almost sold out of four shows. We have four tickets left. And this is something that the Village Association, the Dunwoody Village Alliance, wanted to do. So we've put it into play, and there's an appetite for it, and it's bringing businesses to these restaurants. So we will probably try to sell another show out um once this one's sold out. Holy is um an event that I started as a grassroots event last year with just friends. And it became so big, they agreed to bring it on to Create Dunwoody. So with marketing, we believe we'll have a much larger attendance. Um, we sell colors, we have food vendors and music. So it fits the economic development part where we are showcasing the businesses in the park. A E P I is similar to our Latino Hispanic. That'll be the fifth year we're doing it. And the storefront art exhibit continues. So that's engaging our businesses in the village. Fifteen high school students, the high school loves this program, the art, the art teachers love it. And we can showcase an art exhibit in the village. And as you know, some of this art goes into the Green Light Art Project, so the traffic signal boxes get covered with Dunwoody High School student artwork. So here is sort of just the overview of our signature events. And I would love to continue to do all these events because there is an appetite for them. Um, I have people that have, you know, talked about them and want to do them. So as much as I can, we'll do these ad hoc events in between the large events that are coming up. And of course, the funding comes from City of Dunwoody, which we're very grateful for, Development Authority and Discover Dunwoody. And um I'm, they allow me to have an office space there. And we get if uh if that proceeds from our sales, our ticket sales and our vendors and sponsorships. So with all these things that we have now, I'll be able to further get more sponsorships now that they know they, what we do, how many people we touch, how it's impacting the uh envi- economic development. And um we'll have enough to put into grant applications to try to go for those. So that is, that's it for my presentation. I really appreciate the city's support and hope you'll continue to support this. And uh that's it. If you have any questions, I'm open.
Uh, thank you, Rosemary and Terry. Uh, any council questions or comments, John?
I'll jump in. Rosemary, thank you for all you do. You are engaging our community and our um a- all the things that we want to share about what's great with Dunwoody. And you are pushing and pushing those items out there. You're working with the nonprofits. Um, I I think you're doing a wonderful job as far as there's a lot of nonprofits and a lot of events that are already happening. Is there any thought of pushing some of those events? I mean, I'm trying to think of one of the, the Taste of Dunwoody was an event that was big here, that was all about, I think, a children's hospital. And I'd love to see that come back. I'd love to see anything that we can do to push community events forward. I know that um we have some great events that have lasted forever, the the parade and things of that nature. Are we working with any of those other nonprofits to push what's already successful or just trying to create new?
We are working. I am working with, um, I know Dunwoody Homeowners Association has events, and I would be in, I know they want to work with us as well to figure out, you know, what we can do, especially with the light up Dunwoody and um our holiday celebration. I know we'll be talking about that. Um, in terms of working with other groups, uh like the Mother's Day Festival, I'm trying to do something to support them in add-on event possibly. Um, but I'm also working with a lot of the property managers of all those different new places as well, like Park Place and Campus two forty four, to try to figure out how we can bring things to them, like Taste of Dunwoody. So it would be Taste of Dunwoody at that location. So just, I am trying to work with a lot of nonprofits and figure out how we can build on synergies of their events, but bring it to make it more economic development sort of focused.
Yeah, right. So I mean, things like school events and the 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 races and things like that wouldn't be economic development, though it is a great community event. I'm just trying to think of the focuses on how we can keep improving it. So thank you. You're doing a great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I I just have more praise than question. Um, I think in the last year, this organization is finally starting to do what I think we all hoped it would do. And I think that is a testament to what you have brought to it. So I'm looking very forward to seeing what's coming in the next year or two and how it might grow. And I was really excited to hear that you were actually sharing space with Discover Dunwoody because I think there's, that's a chance for just a lot of, I guess, organic collaboration for what can you do? What can we do? How can we make this better? And so I'm very excited to hear about that. So that's no question, just a a thumbs up. Well done. Thank you.
Rosemary, I'm delighted that you became Executive Director. We are excited to have you and happy to have you and really interested in what you're gonna bring to the table. And I also appreciate Terry Polk continuing on as president because it was not an easy year, twenty twenty four. And it's just gonna get better and better. And as Rob mentioned, Discover Dunwoody, there's Mark, I see him. It is a wonderful organization. He's on the board, but he's also helping us with the the meetings. And I say us, but now my time is done. And I want to recognize Rob Price as the city's representative for to Create Dunwoody. Welcome, Rob.
So if anybody knows me, they know I'm a competitive person. So what what was your idea with the corporate challenge? And has that happened or what?
Oh.
Yeah. And also, just seeing that you have the empty nester thing that has PTSD for me, because that's the day I broke my arm, was that day?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Um, but yeah. The corporate challenge, I'm actually currently working with Lauren Sock because she does Active Dunwoody, and she does a scavenger hunt, and we're talking about maybe our first. So I'm doing this in little bite-sized, not a huge, let's do a huge corporate event, but little bite-sized. Let's try this scavenger hunt first. And I work with some of the ERG groups, ERG of IHG and uh State Farm, Cox. They all want to get to know each other. They've told me, like, we would love to get to meet other people that do, you know, similar things to what we do. Um, so with a scavenger hunt, it would be an art scavenger hunt where we would get them together and let them compete and try to find things. So doing those in little, you know, maybe have a putt-shack night or a game show night so we can bring business there. That's the idea.
City Council show up for the putt- putt-shack night, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Just saying. Thank you. And again, welcome. Like, it's it's been so great, and I can't wait to see where this goes.
Yeah.
Hey, Rosemary, um, yeah, ditto on what everybody said. Thank you so much. I always said, undercommit and over-deliver, though, right? Don't take on too much because we want you to be successful. It's a challenge to say yes to too many things. I'm just saying, be good, right? I'm just saying, because, you know, I've got a couple of things I'd like you to do too.
Oh, God. Yeah.
Like in Open Streets, like in Open Streets, you know, but whatever. Anyway, but thank you so much for for being there and just connect uh folks together and move on forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Rosemary. I'll just echo the praise that has been uh um very deservedly given to you and the organization. It's real exciting to see, you know, this vision we have for these types of things, but also how quickly it's come together and how the quality of the events as well. So it it's, it was no small task and how uh the the, having a full calendar event, it's it's been a great to see and and a big tribute to you and and the team for putting that together. And also, I'll just give you a little bit of a teaser, the Georgia Municipal Association had their Cities United Summit uh this past weekend uh downtown Atlanta. And during that summit, I had a conversation yesterday morning with somebody that may be a good uh place-making partner for Create Dunwoody. So I will be talking to you probably tomorrow to share that information with you. So so- something to sleep on tonight, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Nandina Lane Pilot Project. Jonathan?
Well, good evening. Happy to be with you uh here tonight to update you on the Nandina Lane Pilot Project. Uh, some quick background on this project. So uh Nandina Lane, as you all know, and probably everybody in Dunwoody knows, is a diagonal street in the Dunwoody Village area that goes between Shambly Dunwoody Road and Mount Vernon Road. Um, in some ways, it acts like a glorified right-turn lane um from kind of Shambly Dunwoody Road southbound to Mount Vernon Road westbound. Um, a lot of heavy um southbound traffic on Nandina Lane, but very, very little northbound traffic, kind of making the reverse of that right-turn maneuver. Um, this enter, this, I guess, intersections in this road have been the subject of many studies in the past. It was identified in the Road Safety Action Plan as a part of uh those those intersections being part of the high injury network and having a crash history, especially at the Nandina Lane and Mount Vernon Road intersection. It's been the subject of numerous uh resident safety concerns, including uh one who gave a public comment earlier this evening. Uh, there's been over the last um twenty seventeen through twenty twenty three uh fifty crashes roughly at Nandina Lane and Mount Vernon, including about nine injury crashes and one reported crash involving a pedestrian. There have been some other pedestrian-involved crashes before that timeframe. And uh there there may have been some other minor ones that have gone unreported too, but this is the crash date that it's available. Uh, and then also a a lesser crash history um up at the northern end at Nandina Lane and Shambly Dunwoody Road. The name, uh, let's see, the, just identifying these two intersections I'm talking about here. Um, the Dunwoody Village Master Plan also identified Um, the Dunwoody Village Master Plan also identified a reconfiguration opportunity for Nandina Lane. And that's in this highlighted area right here, a little snippet from the Dunwoody Village Master Plan. And so we wanted to take on uh, addressing some of the safety concerns here, especially at that intersection with Mount Vernon. And we wanted to uh, start out looking at what are some of the issues? One of the main issues uh, we're seeing is, you know, there's the skew angle, there's the, the angle that Nandina Lane makes when it hits Mount Vernon is uh, is very diagonal. It's, it's not a nice 90 degree angle like you typically uh, want to see at most intersections for better sight distance. Um, so we have concerns with pedestrians, especially ones coming from kind of the church side. Um, being outside of driver's field of view when a driver's pulling up to the intersection, looking off over their left shoulder to see who's coming from the left so that they can continue to make a right turn. Um, so, so really one of the solutions or the, the key solution we want to look at at this intersection is making it closer to a 90 degree intersection. Um, the graphic I'm showing here kind of shows what it would look like to do that. Uh, without making Nandina Lane uh, one way in that area. If you were to maintain the full width and just kind of bend it in a way that you could uh, make it a better angle, you would need to do some right away acquisition, most likely kind of on the Dunkin' Donuts and Dry Cleaners corner there. Um, and you would likely need to move some utilities. So it'd become a little bit more expensive, a little bit longer term project, not a mega project, but, but something that you can't just do in a matter of months, it'd be a matter of years uh, to complete that. And uh, there are also some improvements related to Nandina that are planned as part of the upcoming Shambly Dunwoody Road in the Village LCI project, the multimodal project uh, in that area that, that would also address some uh, some things related to Nandina Lane. So we wanted to look at what can be done a little bit sooner on a little bit smaller budget. And uh, what that looked like was uh, we recommended two phases. So the first phase is what you've seen already. Um, this was just closing that right turn lane from Mount Vernon eastbound, or sorry, westbound onto Nandina Lane so that the rest of Nandina Lane still stays two-way the way it already was. But just that, that very southern end um, next to Mount Vernon became essentially one way where people continued to make the major movement they were already make, making, going southbound and turning right. So this on its own didn't address the intersection angle uh, those issues, but what it did allow us to do was just to uh, take a firsthand look at, at how Nandina Lane functions with this one movement eliminated. So uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and move on to what the second proposed phase looks like, and then I'll talk a little bit about what, uh, what we've observed during the first phase. So uh, this is, this has not happened yet, but this is kind of the, the next phase that we are proposing that does address the, the intersection skew angle issue and helps bring pedestrians coming from the sidewalk in either direction closer into the driver's field of view before the driver crosses the crosswalk and makes that right turn. Um, so, but in order to do that without buying right away, without impacting those properties and those utilities, uh, had to kind of reuse some of that road space that was being used for that, that kind of right-hand uh, northbound turn. Um, so, so this is kind of the, the, the goal for the, the nearer term, uh, shorter term proposed project. And what we've observed, oh, and, and the, a second part of that, wow, something really interesting happened to the fonts here. Um, those are road names in uh, you know, in, in wingdings language. Um, yeah, it wasn't like that earlier today, but uh, a little, little bit of, little bit of comic relief in, in safety engineering. You gotta have, gotta have some of that sometimes. Um, anyway, that, that road, the, the AI with a cross in the middle of it, that, that's um, Nandina Lane. Uh, we're kind of looking at this a little bit uh, sideways to, to kind of get, north is kind of to the right in this picture, if that helps. And then the one that starts with a nine, uh, that's nine for Shambly Dunwoody. Um, that's, that's kind of going, going diagonally there. So, so this is, this is your other kind of skewed intersection there. Um, where the, the main concern at this area has been um, the both uh, complaints that we've gotten about drivers kind of making a left from Shambly Dunwoody uh, northbound onto Nandina Lane. And then not having uh, drivers yield to them who are going south and making again, kind of that glorified right turn maneuver from Shambly Dunwoody down onto Nandina Lane, as well as uh, similar complaints about the crosswalk, pedestrians crossing that crosswalk across that sort of slip lane and uh, and concerns about drivers yielding there. So we're, we're also uh, proposing, we, we're kind of still working out the details on, on what this looks like, but some, some other improvements to improve yielding uh, at that, that slip lane. It's kind of a very slight angle that allows drivers to move kind of quickly and, and don't always heed the yield sign there. So that's phase two. Uh, we've been evaluating phase one. Um, we, we've kind of done some quick checks on data available to us to uh, kind of so, some gut checks to make sure there are not any um, I guess unintended consequences that we weren't aware of, that we should be aware of. Uh, we did some, some quick economic data analysis using the city's Placer AI subscription to the um, even though uh, the, the Dunkin' Donuts and the Dry Cleaners are not immediately uh, have access directly on Nandina Lane. There were some uh, some people who got with us and said, hey, we're, we're concerned about people being able to get in and out of these businesses because sometimes they'll, people will make a right and then a right to get out of them on Nandina Lane. Uh, we did not observe any noticeable um, changes in visits based on that tool to those visits. We also pulled crash data um, before and during the, the trial period of phase one and uh, did not actually see any, any crashes that could have even possibly been um, attributed to, to any of the changes there. So that was a good sign also. Um, we did uh, get in touch with the property owners directly along Nandina Lane before phase one went in. Um, and, and during phase one, some of them kind of shared with their networks that they could give feedback to us. We did get some of that feedback. Um, some of it was concerned about things like uh, like longer travel patterns and certain, certain maneuvers and certain directions. And there were people who were, I guess the main safety related concern was people who were concerned that now if they were making a left from uh, from Shambly Dunwoody onto Nandina at the north end, uh, that second intersection I showed, that the yielding issue of people going southbound. So uh, that's part of why we also want to uh, work on addressing that during phase two as well. So uh, oh, look, we still got those, those fine uh, road names here. That is, that is so interesting. So we uh, anyway, this is our, our recommendation. We just wanted to bring this to you um, for, for your information, for your input. Um, but our plan currently is to move forward with this phase two. The beauty of a pilot project like this is it can also be very uh, cost efficient to change later, in, including the planned changes that are already planned later on with the uh, Dunwoody Village LCI project. But um, but we, we think that the data uh, and the engineering supports moving forward with this and just wanted to give you all a chance to give your feedback and ask any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you, Jonathan, and uh, congratulations for being the first presenter in the city's history to use the Wingdings font. So uh, council comments or questions? John?
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, the Shambly Dunwoody Plan, that focus is all about pedestrian for the most part. It doesn't affect any road transportation. It doesn't improve road transportation at all. When our businesses sign up and come to our fair city to do business, I'm not sure they're thinking down the road that they're going to have access to their drivers cut in half in the sense of that dry cleaners. Tell me how you're going to pull out and go northbound on Shambly Dunwoody out of that drive, dry cleaner at nine in the morning. It's really hard to get across that traffic in order to head northbound. Same thing with going eastbound on Mount Vernon. You gotta go across lanes of traffic. It's really hard to do that. A lot of people were going right, right, and then coming out. Right now they have no access to do that. So I'm worried about those businesses. They didn't sign up for this pilot project. And I'm worried about long-term, how that's going to work. I agree wholeheartedly with the 90% 90 degree angle of the turn. That being said, I would really love to see long-term a plan to have Nandina stay the way it is for two-way transportation. Um, because I think that dry cleaner needs it. If that's what they signed up for, the businesses on Nandina same way. As far as the right of way that might be needed, we're spending millions of dollars on other improvements. This is a right of way that could be made. You gave us a photo of right of way acquisition through the Dunkin' Donuts. You didn't think of moving it the other way through the, I guess, the church property. I'd love to see options for that. Again, I have no problem with this moving forward short-term, but I also want to know what's the end date of this project? When is the end date of the one-way only on Nandina? Right now you have, we've done it this way for now. When is this over? When can we tell the people that don't like this project that it's going to change and we'll make a final decision? Do you have an answer for that?
I don't have an exact answer for you. I, I think our current plan would be if, if this is successful at the, you know, it seems to be successful, the safety outcomes that we are aiming at, that it would probably stay in place until approximately the, the Dunwoody Village LCI project coming through. Um, and, but I think what you're saying about maintaining, going back to two-way at Nandina and Mount Vernon, I, I think that can very much be on the table for that, that longer term and, and, and maybe, maybe it wouldn't necessarily have to be that same timeframe as the, as the um, Shambly Dunwoody Village LCI, but that's, that's kind of the timeframe that we had discussed.
Again, I've seen lots of people turning right onto Nan, from Nandina onto Mount Vernon and barely stopping. We've had more police reports and, you know, complaints about that. I wholeheartedly agree with the 90 degree stop sign, stop, and then make your turn. I agree with that. My problem is, is cutting out the, the Nandina going north. I think it's unfair to the business that's there. They've lived with it for a while. I want to know when it's going to stop. Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I would prefer that it stays one lane. I think uh, one way, one lane. I think you've got the same situation on the other side of Mount Vernon with the gas station. And there are way more cars, I'm going to guess, that go through the gas station than the dry cleaners. You'll get a feedback from them after this amount of time as to what their people have done. So that would be helpful. I am, my question is about the southbound. If you're coming off Shambly Dunwoody, there are two ways to get onto Nandina. Why would you have the yield to the many, 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 many cars that go straight versus the car going left? The northbound car and left.
So why, why would you have the uh, the, the ones who are making kind of a less of a sharp going straight versus why would? I, I think it's, it's just kind of a more um, a more common practice to have the right turning vehicles yield. Um, you, you could possibly come up with a situation, I guess, where a vehicle turning left who's having to turn across an oncoming vehicle. You could have one vehicle, they have to yield, another vehicle tries to turn and gets stuck in traffic trying to make a, make a left turn across an oncoming maneuver. I think that's the way it's, it's, the, the reason it's typically done this way is, is because the, the maneuver that has no conflicts is having to yield to the maneuver that already had to um, look for a conflict before they made the turn.
So these people coming south on Shambly Dunwoody, they're going essentially straight. I mean, they just keep on going. You, they're not making a right turn to get onto that road. And that's why they don't stop because it doesn't seem reasonable to stop at that spot. And I would, I would argue that you don't have enough people turning left off the Shambly Dunwoody Road to make, to give them the leeway. And I understand two cars can't fit there, but one can. And that, the other person turning is going to have to wait anyway to make the turn, I think. I think I would do a traffic count. I mean, you, you probably want to count how many people are turning left there at all to get that information. That would be my recommendation to do that. I like the way this looks up at the top of Nandina. Uh, maybe you can green it up, you know, plants or something like that. If you, or if you are digging up that ground south of the, or the north of the crosswalk, maybe you can put in some grass or, you know, something. Uh, but I like it. Thanks.
Right. Thank you.
I had a question on um, the, in that, the, with the accidents on the accident count. Do you happen to know, like, is it people from Nandina making the ride into Mount Vernon and they're just not seeing the people on Mount Vernon? Or do you, do we have any idea what the cause of most of the accidents were, are?
It's a mix. Uh, really a lot of them are rear end crashes and I, I think a lot of them are rear end crashes where one driver was so surprised that a driver actually stopped at the stop sign that they hit them. Um, that is my, my reading into some of the crash reports. I wasn't there for these, but based on me standing at the intersection and watching what's happening. Um, but I, I think, I think that's also something that could be addressed by the intersection geometry, you know, at an intersection where everybody expects everybody to stop. I, I would, I would think that some of that behavior would be um, improved as well.
And I just want to thank uh, Jeremy Berry for coming out tonight and speaking. And I know he's been pushing this issue. He and I and you stood there and watched. And I mean, I've never seen people actually accelerate to run a stop sign before as much as they do on Nandina. Um, so I also am in agreement with Catherine that I, I'm not convinced that this needs to be a two-way road in any way, shape or form. I guess I, I disagree with, with Councilwoman Lotte Becker a little bit that I understand what, where the yield is where it is. Having said that, if you're coming south in Shambly Dunwoody, it has got to be more apparent that there is a yield there because I know I've been surprised a couple of times too. And it's just, it is a tricky intersection. So I would love to just make that more obvious to everyone. Pedestrians, drivers both direction because, because it is a tricky one. You're, you're kind of surprised that you have to yield. But again, thank you for doing this. I'm, I'm glad we're doing this and, and taking the time to study and look at all the um, various effects and, and, and so we're not caught surprised. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Jonathan, um, as well. Um, everything takes longer than everybody expects, might me included, right? Um, where you said it's even going to take, um, you said like that the final one would take even longer. Like um, just, just for an order of bank suit now, like your visual, I, I'm a visual person. If you look at the, just the Mount Vernon portion, can you maybe change the slide real quick and just go to the visual where you see that overhead? Yeah, well, actually go, yeah, well, okay. So the existing one though, your other slide, can you go, you just flipped through the other one. There, you see the little pork chop in the middle, whatever, that little raised cement thing? That, that's going to be going away, right?
Yes.
Okay. So when you talk about, let's just say, look, I support the greatest safety feature for the most vulnerable user. And that's what you're proposing. So I support that. Um, I'm just saying, what if, you never fail, you never plan for failure, you plan for success. But to retrofit, what we're going to be doing now is taking out that, the raised cement as currently is existing, right?
Right.
That piece of cement, that one's parallel the rubber and that little triangle piece, right?
Right.
Okay. So that's going to come off. Okay. Then can you go to your next slide then? And at, or wherever, the other way. Okay. And then on that white part where the little dots are, you're going to maybe potentially say it's going to be plastic ball or some kind of vertical delineator, something?
And, and I know delineators are a hot topic, I know, among, among many people just aesthetically. Um, so we're, we're looking at, you know, what we can do that's kind of as, as low profile, but still um, effective as possible. So maybe some vertical elements, but also maybe some of those kind of large, kind of rounded, raised pavement markers. Basically things that would discourage you from running over them and going into the, the hatched out areas. Um, but that's, I, I think that's a few options on the table right now.
Big old uh, raised concrete planters for some flowers, a flower box in them. You'd have to have somebody watering them though, but those could happen. Oh, yeah, right. Um, and then oh, the other part of the intersection, I'm not as familiar with, but I see it's complex on the where the Nandina Shambly Dunwoody is at that other end of it. I don't know if that's north, southeast or west, that one there. And then um, I guess what would have helped is to see what is in the future plan in the LCI when we're going to redo all Shambly Dunwoody. Is that, is that, do we have a concept on what we're already going to do there in the future?
We do, and I, I believe, Michael can check me on this. I believe it's, it's kind of turning it into more of a kind of 90 degree T type of intersection as well. Is that, that's right.
In general? So it's not going to be two points. It's just the, you all go to one place.
High-speed slip lane, um, you can still make a right, but it's going to be a little bit more of a normal shaped or more typical shaped right turn to, to eliminate some of those yielding issues.
Right. And then um, yeah, I'm a big fan of raised pedestrian crossings that I don't know if we have any at all in, at any intersections at all. But is this a candidate for a raised crossing here or is it in, in either over in Nandina and Mount Vernon? Are either of those candidates for raised pedestrian crossings? Are either of those candidates for raised pedestrian crossings at those intersections to act as a traffic calming and to, you know, just raise awareness that here's a facility, it's going to be biker. I mean, well, there's a bike lane on Mount Vernon too. So, you know, there's, here's a, a facility with some, some joggers and walkers and people on baby strollers and stuff.
It's a great question. I, I personally love raised crosswalks. We, we talked about that at this intersection, um, and talked about also the idea of possibly like a, um, speed cushion right near the crosswalk. One, one challenge with this kind of, uh, size of project and time scale of project is, you know, doing things that touch drainage and, and other things like a raised crosswalk sometimes may, um, may, may be a little bit bigger scope than the, the kind of quick type of project we're trying to do here. We did talk about doing like a speed cushion right near the crosswalk instead, which would be, I think, have a similar effect. Uh, we talked about doing things like, uh, flashing yield signs to help, uh, help draw drivers' attentions to the yield signs. But, um, but that, that's the, the, the vertical elements definitely like, like the speed tables or the raised crosswalks or the speed cushions, uh, definitely improve compliance.
Right. And just to let, last comment on the raised crossing is I've, I've seen ones where it doesn't go all the way curb to curb. And basically it's like, almost like, um, it's a metal grating where the water can go underneath at each of the ends, right? So I'm sure there's an inch in your own. Okay. So by the way, you know, what's motorist behavior today? You know, this past week I did see a motorist making a legal left turn onto Mount Vernon from Nandina. Part one, okay, I saw that one happen in the last week, um, right there. And then just, I, I came, I was coming over this area around 215 and, uh, looks like there's only two barrels, two construction barrels there now. And somebody just pushed them next to each other. So I think cars might be coming. So do we have people checking in on that every few days to make sure the barrels are positioned properly? Is that part of Public Works or, 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 uh, you know, landscape folks?
I know we, we've been, I mean, it's, it's on the way to a lot of things. So I know we've been informally checking in on it, but we can, we can check on that again.
Um, and then just looking at the area in synergy, a few years ago, even before this change was made. I'm calling them turtles, but there's little half circle, yellow bumpy things that run along the center line. So on Mount Vernon, um, as you're going east, before you get to Shambly Dunwoody, there was installed maybe several year, a few years ago, those little, those bumps along the yellow lines. Half of them are broken and they're busted and gone. Is that just operation maintenance? Are, are we, because I've seen people make a left turn there too. Even with the construction barrels, I've seen people do some crazy things, right? That, that's just, so was it not turned left onto Nandina from Mount Vernon, right? Uh, that's been in existence for quite a while after we installed the little pork chop thing.
Right. I believe that was 2017. That was why I, I picked the crash data from then, because there have been a lot of really, really great improvements that were made. I believe it was in, in 2017 that, that really, really addressed a lot of issues at that intersection. This is, this is kind of the next step toward that. But as far as kind of refreshing those, uh, refreshing those existing hurdles, uh, on, on Mount Vernon, that, that's, that's a good thought.
That'd be right. All right. Great. Well, thank you. Oh, and last one though, so the timeframe, this pilot project phase approach, if you talk about timeframe, it's not may, how long it may be in existence on this, but when would it? When can it get to this stage where you're proposing? What does that timeframe look like to when it was, when it would be in this configuration that you're proposing?
I, I think the next steps would just be starting to get, uh, get a bid from the contractor and, and get prices and just kind of iron out a few more of those details. Um, but I mean, I think, Michael, would you want to weigh in on timeframe anymore? Month or two, most likely.
And does that need to come to city council or is it just going to move forward then, uh, by staff?
I'll let Michael speak to that.
I, I, I think that's what, uh, why Jonathan's here tonight to, to see if we're ready to move, if the council's ready to move forward and then we would implement.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
I guess we're all, we've all got something to say about tonight. Thank you, uh, for bringing this up. This, um, you know, the citizen commented earlier about this intersection. This happens to be when I used to run, one of the three places where I was almost hit by a car was this intersection. So I am very intimately familiar with the safety issues here. Um, I'm really glad we're doing something with this. Um, I do share John's concerns a little bit, not necessarily with the dry cleaner, because they share the, uh, the parking lot with Dunkin Donuts. They do have access to Shambly Dunwoody, but there are some other businesses to the north. I just hope we talk to them. Um, Placer AI is great, but it may be that they have loyal enough customers that they're managing to find their way there. But I want to make sure we're not going to unduly really impact a business. Um, hopefully we can come up with something really beautiful here that, um, is, is lovable. But I, that, that's one concern I have. So I'm glad we're making it safe, but let's just also make sure we're talking to the businesses and making sure we're, we're doing the best we can to, it's not going to be perfect, but to kind of help in both ways. So thank you.
Uh, yep. Thank you, Jonathan. Just a quick question on the, uh, moving on to phase two. I know you're not supposed to take a left turn from Mount Vernon onto Nandina. And obviously not with it being a one way out, but, uh, I am concerned that moving on to phase two, once those large barrels are removed, uh, people may try to make the left there, uh, because the barrel, with the barrels gone, it may not be as obvious that they can't do, are there any plans to put up either a barrier or a do not enter sign or something to make that crystal clear that that is a one way out, uh, for traffic?
Yes. So right, it, it would be, you know, it would be one lane wide with only the, only the traffic coming, you know, coming from Nandina as well as do not enter signs to, to help reinforce that.
Okay. I just want to make sure those do not enter because I didn't see that in here. And then to address the issue with the, uh, with the dry cleaner and Dunkin Donuts and the turning out of there. Is there, is there space or is, is the idea been explored for, or is there room with the parking lot or to put a driveway around the building that could connect to where it is? Nandina is once again two way, uh, so that we're not worrying. We could keep Nandina one way out to Mount Vernon and still give people the chance to go northbound on Shambly Dunwoody with a driveway or something like that?
Um, it, it may be that the grades are, are a little bit challenging and Nandina is kind of higher up than the, than the parking lot. But, um, that's, it's something we could, we could look at.
It'd be a good, uh, potential solution to explore. It may not be feasible, but just, just another potential solution to that. So.
Thanks.
Okay. I believe that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, are, are we discussing? Phase two? Were you looking for that guidance, Michael? You got it? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. And before we, uh, discuss that, uh, I just wanted to, um, point out, uh, I, item number 11 is a resolution appointing members to serve on the sustainability committee. I do see that Anne Hicks is here. I wanted to acknowledge her being present. I don't see Kristen, but there are some blind spots. If she's here, let me know, but, but, uh, Anne, thank you for your willingness to serve in that committee. Um, so with that, we are at the consent agenda.
I'd like to request that we move item 10 off the consent agendas, probably after the consent agenda. So.
To move item 10.
Just for a quick question.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I just want to make a note that I was unable to attend the January 13 meeting. So I will be voting on the minutes, but I am unsure of their veracity.
Okay. And, uh, just, um, a little housekeeping. So the, uh, item 10 will now become item 11 and move to the business items.
And I want to make an HVAC comment. I don't know if it was clear, if we were clear, what it said was, how are we going to fund it? And I think the decision was the top priority, the T blast funds. So I guess I wanted to make that clear. That's what we're.
Yes.
Voting on.
Is that correct, Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Stacy, second by Catherine. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. Well, we'll now discuss, um, item number 10, which is the new item 11. Um, project group agreement with the perimeter CID for Ashford Dunwoody path. John, you had some comments?
Yeah, I just had questions regarding the 2.5 million. I want to know, uh, where we are at, at on that funding. Is it in the bank? Are we waiting on funds? Just where is the money coming from?
Uh, the, the money's coming from the hotel motel, um, tax. And I believe it's all already been collected. Richard may be able to, yeah, we, we have that amount already.
All right. So the money's in the bank and we're ready to roll and it's all there. Thank you. It's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Item number 12 Georgetown Gateway Sculpture, Michael.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'm back with the, uh, for approval. So this is an action item asking for you to approve, uh, the budget for, uh, this sculpture. The Dunwoody Art Commission is proposing installation of, um, a, a piece of sculpture called Human Interfusion um, along Shambly Dunwoody Road as part of the Georgetown Gateway Project. Um, any project over a million dollars, um, the public work sets aside 1% of that project um, for, uh, for art. And, uh, this project, uh, we set aside $65,000. Uh, the Art Commission released a, an RFP. Um, we had 28 submissions, a number of them from outside the country. Um, a subcommittee selected, uh, this art and the Art Commission approved that on September 4th. Uh, we did discuss this earlier at October 28th. We have worked back and forth with the artist and I think we're ready to, to move forward with the contract. Once you're, we get approval from you for the funds. Uh, this is the general area along, uh, Shambly Dunwoody Road where it will be installed. It's a nice area outside the commercial area. It gets much quieter there. There's a lot of tree covered, um, and we have enough easement, uh, that the city controls that we don't have to go to a, a neighbor and either, um, get that or, or buy it from them. Uh, this is the sculpture. It's 19 feet tall. Um, it's quite large. Um, we have gotten a number of other, um, visuals from the artist. So, so hopefully you can see what it, what it really looks like. This is one driving, um, if you're driving along Shambly Dunwoody Road. Um, it's off to the side there. Uh, this is one from above. As you can see, there is a light box, four light boxes underneath it. And one of the reasons the Art Commission selected this was because it was designed to be lit. Um, and we would control those lights so we could change them at times. We could really create any color we, we would like on, on the art itself. Um, these are two other, uh, visuals with, with different color lights. Um, Myrick Struzik is the artist. He's from Poland and he specializes in these kinds of public art, especially now using light. He's, he's widely, um, known all over Europe, um, Asia, as well as in, in the United States. And again, tonight we're asking for the, uh, the council to approve the budget of $65,000, not to exceed that amount. His, his budget was 55, but we're asking for an extra 10, just in case we run into some issues. Um, obviously we don't use that, uh, that will go back into, uh, the general budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Joe, second by Rob. Any comments or questions, John?
I have a couple. Um, first question, I guess, I consider the Dunwoody sign relatively close to this and I consider that public art. But this, uh, this new sculpture is going to be put in the city right of way completely, correct?
It's great.
And what is the property behind it? I see the tree line. How far is the, uh, what's the buffer zone needed for being next to a public piece of art that's lit?
Uh, I'm not sure if I, I know that, that about, so, so behind it is, uh, is the nonprofit through a huge, um, uh, amount of trees. Across the street, there are a number of houses.
Private residences, right?
Yeah.
And has the council put into actual policy, the 1% of the public?
The, the council did not, but it's, it is a policy of, of the Public Works Department.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to think it all through in the sense of things are changing and, you know, elections happen, elections have results, whatever. Um, I just want to make sure that we are looking at using our best money and the, putting this in the best place as well. Um, I just have some concerns. Again, I just have some concerns. The, the, the light aspect, we, we worry about lighting of certain shopping centers and things like that. But now we're putting up public art and I'm not sure, I don't know the lighting aspect of what it's going to look like from the neighbors across the street. I'm just trying to look, uh, I'm thinking a city park might be a little better, but then again, it's hidden a little bit from the public. But that being said, we have the city sign just down the street, just relatively right down the street. And how much public art do we need in a row? Is there a better place for it? So I, I have some concerns over that aspect. Our city sign, is that lit?
It will be.
It will be. So that's the other aspect. So we have the lit sign with a now with a lit thing. And we're, have the, a zoning, uh, account plan that says, you know, preserving green space. It just seems to me like it's getting to be, there's a lot of lighting there. I don't know. I just, I have concerns over it. And I'm not sure we've looked at it from that perspective on whether that's the, really the right spot. I mean, it's around a curve. It's on the city right of way. And is public art allowed to be in the public right of way? In the sense of that on a curve, is that where cars are supposed to jump the curb and have a safe place? Again, I'm just trying to look at it from different perspectives that, has this been well thought out? And, um, or I went, drove by and thought about the other aspects of what's the right of way for? Is the right of way, should we be pushing it back for, backwards more in the trees? Uh, I was just trying to think, safety perspective, lighting perspective, public art after public art in one location. Is that correct? The cost, again, I'm not, I'm not going, it's just a lot of concerns that I'm having. So I figured I would raise it.
Good.
Any other?
Catherine?
Was there any consideration to leaving the light, taking the lights down 10 o'clock, midnight, something?
Sure. I mean, we, we would control that completely and we could decide how best to do that. We could turn them off if we wanted to. Obviously this art was designed with, with, uh, lighting in, in mind, but absolutely we could, we control the lights completely.
It's not lit all day.
No, it's not lit during the day at all. It would be lit only in the evening.
Okay. I just thinking across the street from those couple of houses.
Absolutely.
Yep. I, I think I'll kind of join Catherine's comment. I, I think this is actually not a bad spot for it because behind it is, are, are not residences. It's, it's kind of businesses in park. Um, but the fact that we can't control the lighting, I mean, I see that as a potential issue for the folks across the street. So, you know, it may be that we play around with some, uh, some different, uh, ideas and see what the folks across the street think. They all, it's pretty mild. I don't mind it or wow, I, you know, it's shining through my light, you know, my windows. Can we, at dark, can we turn it off or something, you know? Uh, so anyway, I would just say, let's make sure we're talking to the folks across the street about that. But beyond that, I, I like the fact that we're putting art not in parks finally, but out in the community where it can really kind of help build the character of the community. So I'm excited to see what this looks like when it comes in.
Ken did. Mr. Mayor Protem, the, the only thing, Michael, has the DOT folks looked at this for the road safety, traffic manual, national, whatever the standards are?
I, I, I don't, I haven't heard. Michael.
Mi- Michael Smith, and let me tell you, let me tell you where I'm going with this. That City of Milton case is traveling up through the Supreme Court. And until it's finally decided by the Supreme Court, we just need to be careful in right of ways. And I was wondering, has it been reviewed outside the Arts Council by DOT? And does it meet the, the safety standards required there? Because until that case is decided, right now Milton's on the hook for a judgment that will bankrupt them.
Yeah. We've looked at it internally since it's our road. Um, and it would be far enough off the road that it would be outside what's considered the clear zone. Now, that's normally the standard, but, you know, I think the, I'm not as familiar exactly with the details of the Milton case. But I think the issue was that it was in the right of way. So, I, I mean, if this is obviously in the right of way, but it's outside the area that is typically considered that you need to maintain clear for if a car goes off the road.
Okay. Uh, and thank you. Was that all, Ken? Okay. Thank you. Um, it, um, Mike, I just had a quick question with the, the location there. Um, I know we have trees along the, between the sidewalk and, and the road. Would, would those, as those trees mature, are they gonna, is this going to be an art installation that'll be visible? Basically just for enjoyment of pedestrians or, or, or will those trees kind of lock it out?
We would place it in, because we don't have the exact location in between trees. So you could still see it both as a pedestrian and as a, as a driver.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions to discuss, Joe?
And I know we, we, I'm, we have, there's light meters and things that are available to the large. I'm sure the, the law enforcement. And I know we we I'm we have, there's light meters and things that are available to the at large. I'm sure the the law enforcement or uh code enforcement has those things. And uh you know, I'll just go to say I'm I'm I support this. I'm looking forward to it. Um as far as the light aspect goes, uh you've got street lamps that we've installed already. On the other side of the street that are in front of the residential homes. So if we need to just go out there and just say, okay, well, here's a light meter. Now go turn it on and see what the difference is. It's just standing there on the sidewalk. I mean, it would be very straightforward to just look at. If this is light is just going straight up versus going out.
Yeah, this, as you could see, the boxes were on the ground and so the light is going up. Now, it's a metal structure, so there would be some glint. I mean, it's designed to do that.
Sure, and so do all the headlights of cars driving by too, so.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, this is an action item. We do have a motion and second on the floor, so I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes uh five to one.
Great, thank you.
Uh next up is a resolution to surplus surplus nine vehicles. Richard Plata.
Yes, good evening. Um well, as you said, it's a resolution. We're surplusing nine vehicles. They're all within the police department. There are five Tahos, uh two Explorers and two Impalas. They've reached their useful life. They're all two thousand and seventeen or older models. Um and they either have been replaced or will be replaced uh soon, so. Uh happy to answer any questions you may have.
Second.
Moved by Joe, second by Stacy. Any comments or questions? Catherine?
We had waited on the cars. I were, the car issue has been the arrival of the new cars and you're gonna get them. You're gonna surplus them before they're replaced? Is that what you just said?
No, they're all, um I think they're all been replaced or they might be on order. It takes some time to get uh the ordering process. There's a backlog for getting them in, but yes, I believe the majority of them are on order are are here. They're not short any vehicles as far as I know. Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Richard. Next up is uh Elite Radiology Lease Agreement. Jay.
Uh mayor and council, the item before you here is to extend the lease of our tenant in Senate City Hall that most people do not know is an MRI. Uh we inherited that business when we moved into the building. During COVID, their lease actually expired. It was early on in COVID and. The city decided we'll just let them go month to month and they've been going that way since. In the past year, we've been having discussions with them because we do have need to eventually move into that space. Uh during twenty twenty four, both city staff and the staff of Elite Radiology were trying to come to an agreement and we decided that August thirty first of this year. Twenty twenty five would be an appropriate move out date, so we wanted to officially put that lease back on the table for extension. The other thing this does is brings it back up to a market rate. Uh because they went to month to month during COVID, they stayed at a lower rent rate than the comparable area. And this was worked out over the past couple of months between their firm and our staff, and it's for your approval tonight.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Any comments or questions?
I do have one, oh, go ahead.
Rob?
Just are are, do they feel like they're in good shape to be out at the end of this extended lease period?
Talked to him today. They seem that way.
Okay, just want to make sure that we don't sign something and then they say, oh, we need another month.
Uh there is, there is the possibility that happens. They do have an escalator to the wrench should they stay beyond that.
Alright.
So since they'll be out at the end of August and then that's kind of fourth quarter for us. What is, what is the plan to take over that space and then where do the funds come to retrofit the space so that it becomes usable office space for the city of Dunwoody?
We will be working over that over the next year. Uh the space could be usable on a temporary basis for about a year. Once their equipment is out as temporary to move things around and then look long term with the building as a whole.
Okay, alright. Um move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Stacy, second by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion item, uh approval of contract amendment number three with Jacobs. Richard?
Yes, so uh as stated, this is the contract, third of final contract amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty five for the Jacobs contract. They provide all the. Uh financial and administrative staff, uh majority, I should say, not all, majority of it for uh uh for the finance department. Uh this will allocate funding for the five positions that we currently have on contract. As well as uh senior advisor that's at Jacobs and then floaters that we term as kind of extraordinary help. We might not plan to use them, but when things do come up, those resources are here within the contract and we can use them when necessary. Uh it's about six hun- I'm sorry, seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars and that is budgeted for this year for twenty twenty five. We happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, John?
Yeah, Richard, help me understand this. We had a contract with a lot of people. And now we converted, we took away people out of that contract and made them city employees basically at a wash, same cost. So now we have what's left over. We're going back into a contract to just contract with those same excess employees that we had previously.
So this is just a continuation. So when we entered into the original contract, it was five years. Twenty twenty five is the last year of those contracts, yes.
Okay, and have we increased the amount of services or increased the amount of people? On this contract compared to what was original?
So the only position that we have added, uh well. It's a roundabout way. We did, we do have what is termed the revenue analyst on there, which is additional business license support. So yes, that is one additional position.
Alright, so we are, so we added a position with this?
Not with this one. We actually did it last year, but this is a continuation of it for this year, yes.
Okay, and as far as the rates. We took away revenue from them and now we have a new revenue rate. What was, what's the price per hour equivalent to where we worked, where we are now? I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if we took bodies away and stopped paying them for what we were contracting women for. Is this a good deal for us or is it not? I'm trying to understand it.
So what we've done is we've set a total price basically for the contract and allows them to more uh determine. If they're having trouble filling one position, maybe they need to pay a little bit more at a higher rate or something like that. They know they have to work within these boundaries to staff our positions. They still do have a markup, what they do internally to still make sure that they're making money and and everything. But we more set aside that pot to make sure that we've uh uh fully fund all these positions as well, so. Instead of going rate by rate, we do work with them to set uh rates, but uh we want some flexibility to allow for. If one rate has to pay more, one position needs to pay a little bit more to get the right person in and things like that.
Alright, well, this is for one year. Very much, and we're going to be renegotiating all the contracts.
Correct.
Um that's not going to be fun. Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Consent. Okay, next up is an approval of an MOU with the US Postal Inspection Services, Chief Cross.
Mayor Protem, council members, uh before you is just a memorandum of understanding uh between the United States Postal Inspector Service uh and the Dunwoody Police Department. Uh we recently were attached to HIDA, which is the uh High Intensity Drug Task Force. That was with the DEA. Um looking at over the past five years where we've had that agent out there. Um I started, I wanted to look what was better for um our agency as a whole. Uh and we made a connection with the Postal Inspector Service, so. Uh not only would this give us more access to uh what I call the three letter agencies, as those are our ATF, um uh Federal Bureau of Investigation. Um it makes us more connected with them, which means that just more resources that we can use uh here in Dunwoody. And uh and not only that, uh any issues that we have um with the postal service, we have a priority since we'll have a task force officer. Uh assigned to them, and I know uh granted, it it's on a decline now. We haven't seen um the post, uh the postal. Any postal issues with them breaking into the blue boxes um and washing the checks, but uh we will have that um. We'll have that priority now, so uh I'm requesting uh for you to approve the MOU with uh the Postal Inspector Service.
Uh thank you, chief. Uh comments or questions, John?
Chief, tell us about foreclosures, the money that comes back to the city that under the current. Uh agreement that we have and the work that we do versus this current proposal. What do you see as the differences in the sense of foreclo- of uh?
Asset forfeitures.
I said forfeitures, that's it.
Um so i- it actually is higher than what we had at HIDA. Um especially, um they want to access our canines. We've already used our canines. Um we have an agent over there now. Uh so if we use our canines, the profits are higher of what we seize uh for through asset forfeiture. Exact numbers I don't have. I can get them for you, sir. Um but it is higher and they also give us a higher stipend uh for vehicle use. Um as well as, you know, they pay all the overtime uh because they do have a lot of it. Um so basically, any uh crime that occurs through the postal service, anything from, you know, fraud, drugs, transferring money. Um we get a portion of that, especially if our agent is the lead investigator.
And as far as those three letter agencies, do they have access directly to our cameras, our flock cameras, or do they use us to interpret the data?
They use us.
Okay, so they come to us?
Yes, they do. So um that last um jewelry heist that was going on, they used us. And they were actually very impressed because we were able to give them real time where those vehicles were coming into the city, so they come us, they come ask us uh to utilize that resource.
Alright, sir. If you say it's a good thing, it's a good thing. I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
John's question actually leads to, I guess, a question for me since you brought up forfeitures. Um so if we see something and help the postal service do that. And the person we seize it from says, no, these are not illegal, these are mine. The path for them to get their property back is through the postal service or through Dunwoody Police Department? And our procedures?
Yeah, so it'll go through the federal government.
Okay.
So yeah, once it goes through that process, uh once it goes in front of a judge, the judge will determine, no. We had every right to to seize this property uh because it was used, you know, to support whatever crime, whether it was narcotics or cash violations.
Because those are some pretty funky cases. It's like the United States of America versus, you know, ten thousand dollars cash. It's not against the person, it's against the. I'm I'm just curious because it, that's a um. It has a good intent, but sometimes there's problems with it, so.
Yeah, the seizure.
I want to see how we're getting involved with it and make sure that uh that at least there's a a process, so.
The seizure uh councilman has an independent due process. To conclude the forfeiture of that asset, there's a process that doesn't go through the police, it's separate through the judiciary. On a foreclosure. We may seize it and then there's a process that.
And it'll be, it'll follow federal process.
That's correct.
And then only once that's resolved.
That's right.
Are we wrote back, and that's kind of the que- I I assumed that was the case. I just wanted to ask it so that we could make sure, so thank you.
And we do any type of seizures that we have here that we conduct in the city, same thing. It just goes through the DeKalb County Court. If they find reason that uh we had a lawful seizure, uh then they'll award that back to us as well.
Uh how does it work with staffing? So if we have a task force member, but is it just one person and how does that work in in terms of our staffing and where they are?
So i- it falls under our investigative division. Uh we've had a narcotics position now for five years. Um uh I will not keep a narcotics agent or an agent separated from the department more than five years. They kind of get lost. Uh I've seen it with other agencies that I've worked at. Um so that's why the current agent, well, he's former now, but we pulled him back, put him in CID. So we do have the staffing. We're actually fortunate enough. Uh because it is an additional resource for us to use here at the department. Um uh so they are just assigned under investigations. They're separate. They report to the sergeant uh over investigations and then. We require them to at least come in once uh a week, you know, because we don't want, we want to make sure that they're up to speed on all their administrative duties as well. Uh and we also want to know what is going on. Um you know, what cases are they working? What are you looking at? And you know, this is new. Uh and it's a new agent that's over there, so um no, we're fortunate. A lot of agencies. Due to staffing levels, if they did have those task force officer positions, they pulled them back. So um they were very appreciative, you know, and that's a, that's a, it's a, you know, two way street that. They're there to assist us because we are off offering them, you know, a person to go over there and and to help them uh conduct their investigations.
Hey chief, is this the first MOU with the post office? Did they previously have it with Hidal? Or?
Yeah, so we had one with Hida because that fell on, fell under the DEA. This is now with the United States Postal Inspector Service, so. Um they have to, they have to conduct their own background investigations. Um and they cannot do that without uh mayor council approval. Um so we had, we, he's just kind of over there right now, just uh shadowing. So once and if I get again the approval, then they'll conduct their own just minor background investigation, you know. Um and then they'll move forward from there and actually put him on cases.
But only as needed, right? He's normally here. Normally, would you work in?
No, he'll be completely detached.
Completely detached.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
He'll, he'll, you know, he technically still reports to us, but there's a uh, there's a a special agent in charge that he'll actually report to and then, you know. But yeah, I mean, he falls under us, but he'll be over there full time.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That that was um what you just said at the end. Um this is a full time staffing?
It is.
So our work chart then for our police, when we talk about Barry Dunn and stuff, this wasn't in that study, right?
Because it already existed.
Oh, it already existed, okay. Alright.
Yeah, it's it's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it, thanks. Okay, thank you, chief. Uh everyone good with consent? Okay, thank you very much, chief. Okay, that we're at the second public comment portion. I don't see any public here, so. Uh city manager comments?
Uh no additional comments. Uh we do not need an executive session.
Thank you. Council comments? Um anybody? Uh okay, no comments.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Rob, second by Stacy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meaning say adjourn, thank you.